Today to our Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees meeting. The date is Wednesday, May 5th, 2021, and at 6:38 PM. As a preliminary matter, this is Mary Catherine Decourcy. I am the Chair of the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on our agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, sorry about my dog, please respond in the affirmative. I know that Suzette Dowd is absent today. She told me in advance. Nan Johnson?
Here.
Very good. Jen Shay?
Here.
Paula Melikan?
Here.
Matthew Toth?
Yes.
Hi, Mary Decourcy, I'm here. APL staff, when I call you names, please respond in the affirmative. Jean Collins?
Here.
Very good, thank you. And cable TV manager, Chris Hugo? Thank you. This is an open meeting of the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees. It's being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in all Commonwealth, um, emergency in the Commonwealth, sorry, given the outbreak of the novel coronavirus. For this meeting, Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees is convening by go-to-meeting as posted in the Auburn Town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded on Auburn cable television. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. We'll turn to the first item on the agenda. I do want to say that Suzette did contact me. She said she wasn't feeling well, so she will have the meeting, the meeting minutes of the last meeting before our next meeting. So I apologize for that. We'll go to item three. I wanted the board to recognize Nan Johnson on her many years of service to the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees, and I wanted to share remarks and open up the board if anybody else wanted to share remarks. I did see the lovely entry that Jean placed on the director's report. Jean, I was hoping that you could read that tonight as well. So Nan Johnson, sorry, I'm gonna shut my door. My dog wants to, my dog wants to chip into the, to the meeting. The long, the long-term commitment of service to the Auburn Public Library by Nan Johnson on the, uh, the Library Board of Trustees has made her a truly unique member. Her contributions range from the beautification of the library entrance, her significant contributions to the recent strategic plan, and her consistent and thoughtful attention to fiscal issues. In the past, book sales were important to help the library pay for programs. For Nan and Will, they were a family effort to support the library. You need help? Ask Nan. In her early years on the Board of Trustees, when her role came under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 78, she was directly involved in the responsibility for hiring and evaluating the director, meeting with the Finance Committee regarding library budgets, speaking with town meeting members, and generally working for the benefit of the library and the community. She worked tirelessly, sorry, she worked tirelessly on the plans for a new library in 2005, supported by the town meeting members but not voted on at the town election. Past directors saw her as an important element in the discussions on the operations of the library. As a regular user of the library with interests ranging from children to adult literature and programs, and she knew the strengths and the needs of the library. Over the years, as technology was becoming an increasingly important change in library operations and service, she embraced, encouraged, and supported the changes necessary for the library to stay relevant. Her gentle and direct approach to issues reflected a civility that is often hard to come by in our current environment. We will miss Nan. The community has lost a strong supporter of the importance and the value of the Auburn Public Library, and we will wish her luck as she moves to her new role as a town meeting member. Thank you, Nan.
Thank you.
Really appreciate you. I was hoping, Jean, that you would read that lovely, um, that lovely piece that you wrote on the director's report. I thought this would be an appropriate time. Very nice.
Message of appreciation for Nan Johnson. The library staff wholeheartedly joins me in thanking Nan Johnson for her years of dedicated service on the APL Board of Trustees in support of the library. You've certainly seen a lot of history and evolution. Nan, you have consistently been positive and very supportive of our many changes and initiatives, recognizing that the changing dynamics of services and resources requires constant evolution and a lot of hard work, and I would add that you have certainly provided a lot of that hard work. You have provided me personally with many supportive comments, either in emails, in person, or at meetings, and I appreciate those and your suggestions. You will be missed on the board. Don't forget to stop in. And I know I've already seen you, like, last week and a couple of times, so that's great. Keep coming in.
Absolutely.
Thank you for all of your contributions, Nan. Appreciate you.
Yes, thank you, Jean. Nan or any members of the board, did you want to make any remarks or comments on Nan's last day as a board member? Sorry. Go ahead, Matt. I'm sorry, I didn't see you here.
I, I saw Paula's hand too, and I was gonna defer to her.
Okay.
You don't have to do that. I'll be brief. I, I love the word civility, Mary. I think that the, a word that very aptly describes Nan, and another word I was thinking was gracious.
Yeah.
Nan is just a delight, Nan is a delightful person. And I, she was so kind to me when I injured my knee. She took me to the supermarket. We had a great time chatting, and she was prepared to do far more. She was ready to sign me up for more trips, and I said, Nan, I think I can start driving again. So, um, I don't know who, Jean, is going to take over Nan's gardening skills. That's the least of her abilities, but we're gonna have to work on that one. And Nan, I thank you for our small friendship. Thank you very much.
You're so welcome.
I completely agree with you about the gardening, and I didn't know if that's something you still wanted to do, Nan, or, I mean, we can take it over, but it was always nice. It was like this garden fairy appeared at the night and flowers moving, and great.
The choosing and planting are the easy parts. It's the daily maintenance that I really would like some staff assistance with. We'll, we'll talk, I guess.
Absolutely. Yep, happy to.
Well, I certainly support everything Paula said and Paula said. And there's just, we really will miss just who you are, Nan. You just, you're a certain kind of presence that some people have, and it makes life better for everybody. It makes things easier for everybody. I just really appreciated that from the minute I got on the board. I just, I really enjoy working with you, and I will really miss you.
Oh, same, same here. I'll miss all the events that happened and seeing how things go behind the scene, I said. So, all of you, continue on, please.
I can only echo all these great sentiments, too. You've been a bundle of joy and very supportive, so, so please don't leave, leave the library, as Jean said. Stay by, add in your thoughts, chime in. We will miss you dearly.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You know, Nan, one of the things that you really wanted and worked at was the whole new library business. And actually, it's really wonderful that through the efforts of the town manager and the assistant town manager at Kessenovich, they did shepherd this entire process that got supported at the town meeting last night for the changes in jewelry square plus the addition of the library. So, in a way, whatever you did in the past is now at least starting to look like it's gonna come to fruition. And I think that's really wonderful.
Good. I'm certainly wishing that will continue then. I really missed the town meeting last night, so we have the addition onto the library as well as our, our multi- bridge over the water.
Well, we could call it the beautification of jewelry square.
Totally, huh?
But, but the big part of it is that it passed without almost any difficulty whatsoever, and I think that's important, Nan. And I'm glad to be on the town meeting and continue to support the efforts of the library.
Hopefully, I will be a town meeting member and can be active on the other side now.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
And I just wanna thank you, Nan, for, the moment that I met you, you've made me feel part of the community in Auburn, not just as a part of this particular committee, but just out in the community. You go out of your way to come up and say hello and say hello to everyone I'm with. And I just wanna say that you're a role model, and I will miss you being a member of this team.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next item, and I'm going to mute in between my role so that you're not listening to my dog chirping in the other room, but the next item on the agenda is the director's report. I'm gonna turn it over to Jean.
Okay, so before I go through the report, which is relatively short, a couple of things occurred that I, you know, after I, after I wrote the report. So, as you now all know, of course, the, um, the sunroom addition and the bridge and Goddard Park passed with a, with a nice margin last night. There was a lot of enthusiasm. There was applause. Some people said some really nice things. Charlie Baker got up and spoke about libraries in general, and really, and Ellen Ethea and quite a number of other people as well. So, while we did expect some opposition, it was clear that people were very much in favor. There was some, you know, concern about the bridge, but people, Julie did a great job kind of selling all of this, and so did Ed going through the numbers and everything, so I think they represented us very, very well. One thing that I kind of noticed is when they asked for a second, you usually see one or two people putting their hands up. A lot of people put their hands up eagerly, so it was clear that there really was, you know, this was a good thing for the town, and everybody was very, you know, supportive of that. So, that was definitely a nice win last night. Something else that was just confirmed today, just a little while ago, is that the library will be following the same schedule as Town Hall, and we'll be opening without appointments starting on Monday. So, our hours will be the same, Monday through Friday, nine to six, but people will no longer be required to make appointments. There are restrictions. The, the intended visit time is 15, maybe 20 minutes. Anything over 15 minutes, we need to take their contact information, probably. We don't anticipate doing that unless people want to use the computers, and then they will have to provide their contact information because they'll be sitting. Otherwise, people are not, you know, there's no newspapers or magazines to read. The toys aren't in the children's room or anything. But people have been, this year, this week, I think we had close to 50 registrations, so people have definitely been coming in. And they're very happy to be coming in, and they're taking books out in droves. So, we expect that that's what people are comfortable with, too, just coming in, cruising, you know, they wanna feel the books, touch the books. The kids have been just delighted and delightful to see. So, we've been very, very busy with those appointments, so in a lot of ways, for us, it'll be easier because we'll no longer be doing curbside pickup. There's no possible way to do both. And there's no reason to, because they could just come in. It's literally about 12 steps from outside to the circ desk. So, that will help us a lot because we've been out straight all day, every day. In a good way, because we've been making a lot of progress in a lot of things. So, beginning on Monday, it will be nine to six with no appointments required. And so, that will be reflected on the website tomorrow, and I just got the official notification from Julie. We did talk about it last week, but, you know, the Board of Health weighs in and so forth. So, obviously masks and all those other restrictions inside as well. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the use of the library during, you know, with the transition. If anybody has any questions?
I don't have a question, just a comment. Jean, I just wanna say thank you. Obviously, if everything went as well as both you and Matt have alluded to at the meeting yesterday, that's a testament to your role in the library as well and your support and engagement with the community. So, thank you for that. I'm very excited to see how this moves forward.
Yes, thank you, Jen. That's nice to hear. An added element to that, which I'm kind of hoping to change the timeline a little bit on that, is the expansion of the children's room will now also proceed. So, that's a great, great opportunity to just, you know, kind of, we've all, you know, people have been wanting that for a long time. It's certainly identified in the strategic plan. So, it won't be an external, but it'll be an internal expansion, and, and I can't really say anything more about it. I need to kind of confer with Julie and Ed and so forth. But the plans that I think, that I've already spoken to DPW about are major, but they're gonna be, have major impact. So, I think it's really, it's just a win on all sides for us, and, and thank you for mentioning that. Appreciate it. It's been, you know, a lot of numbers to get prepared and, you know, make sure we present our best foot forward and so forth. So, thank you for that. Appreciate it. Sorry, go ahead.
Yep. Again, just so glad to see things moving forward safely after such a long time with so many concerns. At this deep dive MBA sale meeting I listened to last night, comment was made that now the quarantine for the books is not necessary. What have you heard about that?
Yeah, we started, um, we sort of scaled that down a while ago, and about two weeks ago, we stopped. We weren't really quarantining anymore, but we were sanitizing. And so, we're gonna still sanitize for this week, and when people come in and they touch the books, we sanitize them. But beginning next week, we won't be doing that. They have run a lot of tests. I kind of follow those. And, you know, the risk, especially now that so many more people are vaccinated, that the risk of transmission on materials is much, much, much lower than it used to be. So, we won't be doing that anymore. And honestly, we don't have time. We've gotta get the books circulating. There's a lot going on. So, but good question.
Good to hear. Good to hear. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, so I'll go through the rest of my report here. I did include a couple of photos here that we did. The library cleanup was an Earth Day cleanup, but it's really Earth Week. And Earth Day was so tremendously windy that it, we wouldn't have been able to catch the trash. So, we kind of spread that out. Some of us went in on Saturday morning, but everybody volunteered, and they didn't hesitate. It was like, yeah, we're, we're, we're really take pride in our, our environment. And we did, as you can see, we picked up a lot of trash. And Nan, your note last night, Nan sent me an email last night, and she said she hoped we got, somebody got that big, it was a white trash bag that was floating in the water, and it was, I can't even tell you how much that was bugging me as well, but we didn't know how to get to it either. So, Randy and Dave and I, we had to track, you know, all the way around and then kind of, kind of worked our way down to the water. And then we had to get a tarp that we found in there under the leaves, so we could put it on there so it didn't split open. But we, so we did succeed and get that. And I said to Dave today, I said, "Look out the window. There's another piece of white trash" a little bit further down. I said, "Tomorrow, you and I, we're going out there. We're gonna get that one, too." So, it was, yeah, that was really bothering. It was there forever. I kept waiting for it to disintegrate or something, and it didn't. So, Nan said-
Hopefully, the wind dies down soon.
Pardon me?
Hopefully, the wind dies down soon. It's been very windy on all fronts.
Yes, and I mean, as fast as you pick up the trash, you know what's gonna blow in, so we had to, we had to taste that a little bit. But we, we enjoyed it, and we were also the distribution center for other people in town who were, you know, had volunteered to, to pick up trash, so that was nice. We just put them out on, we put the, you know, the kids together and, and then put them out on curbside for them. So, we enjoyed, we enjoyed doing it. We've kind of made it a commitment. Once a week, we're gonna find time to go out there and just go around the grounds to pick up the trash because it just does blow in. No one else, DPW or anybody can't keep up with it. And it certainly looks better. So, a little bit here about appointments, which I kind of just went over. And the resources, and we've done, now that we're on this stage of things, we've been, which I've been talking about probably for two years, about how much weeding needs to be done, so we're actively doing that. I was kind of hoping in a way we'd have a few more weeks, but now with people coming in, that sort of, you can still do it, but it's much, much harder. But we'll, we'll continue working on that. We've, we've been, you know, deleted a lot of things that hadn't left the shelves in a very, very long time. And not only that, they weren't accurately aligned in the catalog, so there's a lot of steps to this. It's, it's a pretty major project, but we're making a lot of progress. And we'll continue to do that. So, we've also redesigned some of the areas, and I did get some feedback, as a matter of fact, from patrons today who were very happy. And I was gonna take some pictures. Maybe I'll, I'll send some later. First of all, the entire back wall is now large print. So, if you know from going in the library, the large print was on one section of that wall, but then you had to turn around, and some of it was on the other side, and then you had to go around another side. So, we put all of those on that one wall. So, it starts where the magazines were, and since we don't have any magazines now, we sort of transformed that space. So, it makes it much easier. We had to have them up really high, and that's really hard for people to reach, or to bend down if they're really low. You know, people can't get down there to look at them. So, we've able to sort of, you know, change that dynamic a little bit. And so, now that whole wall is there for large print, and people can socially distance while browsing as well, so they're not all so close together trying to look at the books. So, that's been a major improvement. The other thing is that on, along that wall was the new book section, which was not big enough. So, um, when you walk in, there's that standalone shelving unit, which is now new and recommended books. So, the reason we did that was because they're not just all new books, but if people haven't come into the library for a year, there's a lot of books they haven't actually seen. So, it's new and recommended books, which enables us to really fill that whole area, and people are very happy. Again, they displayed nicely, and on the other side of that is an expanded paperback collection, in time for summer. People wanna, you know, throw a paperback in their bag or take it traveling or whatever. So, we've done a lot there.
Jean, can I, I'm sorry. Jean, can I just ask you a question about the weeding? Do we, when you remove books, is it, is it possible to be able to donate them to, you know, organizations like More Than Words? Which is a non-
No one is accepting them. None. Not from any library. They're, they're full. Their warehouses are packed. So, believe me, we've tried every place, as has every other library I know, and there's just no place for them to go. We hope, I think it's still gonna be a while before that turns around, too. And people call us all the time, and I direct them to Salvation Army or the Catholic Charities. I'm not even sure how much more they can accept either. Yeah. It's a hard to throw away book, but there's, there's no alternative, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, as you can see, I did take a picture of these. This is our new spotlight area, and this is the gardening section, which has, um, sort of draws people in. When, when you're looking, there were more books. People took them out. But that's, you know, kind of was hidden in the back before, so I thought, well, it's a night, a good time to kind of spotlight gardening at this time of year. So, it looks much better. That's where the DVDs were for children, and those have been moved against the back wall in the children's room. It's the entire wall is media, so that's all in one place, and it's in the children's room, which has always been a problem. They were not in the children's room. So, we kind of made, you know, repurposed the space here. The box section, which I've talked about, but I have to tell you, every single family that comes in with children borrows the box books, and they come back for more box books, the ones that, the books that read, that talk. They really, really liked them a lot. So, we continue to work on these. We designated a couple of new categories for children, especially beginning chapter books, because we were missing that dynamic with the older chap, kids reading chapter books. But then the, you know, the new readers, and it was, we had the books, but they weren't in a special collection where people could find them. So, we've also identified that, as well as made the graphic novels in a, in a better place for them to find. So, there's a whole wall now of just reading, where you can literally go from reader level one all the way up to, you know, the fiction chapter books. And then the board books are in a separate section, and I just said to Marley and Dave today, I said, "Come take a look." So, we had literally just tossed about at least half of the board books. You know, they get chewed up. They just, like, I don't want babies looking at, you know. So, we, we purchased a whole bunch of them and did a whole nice display, and a half of those are out. So, I guess I have to buy more. So, people are really enjoying, you know, getting the books, definitely borrowing a lot of them. Um, I guess I'll wait for the bill schedule. I'll just finish this up because there's only a little bit more. Our first outdoor program that was gonna be this Saturday, we've been waiting. The weather's just not gonna be conducive to anybody wanting to be outside if it's feeling cold and damp. So, that's been rescheduled, which we already had a rain day anyways, of Saturday, June 5th at 10 o'clock, and that's Wingmasters. So, we'll be able to use our new stage out back. We have, now we have the, the sound system, and the person who specializes in the sound system will be there at the meeting to make sure everybody's, you know, using it correctly. There's a headset. There's a couple of microphones and some really good quality speakers. So, we're looking forward to, you know, holding, this is the first of hopefully a lot of programs we can manage to put together outside, because we won't be holding into a program. Maybe, maybe in the fall. It's hard to say. We are starting another STEM session next week of Young Scientists, so we got the grant again for that one. That will be virtual. And the, we'll see, I, you know, agreed to do it, and people might be outside. It's hard to say what the numbers will be, but it's a grant, and we always really enjoy working with, with them. They do a great job, so we'll be holding that again. And two programs that I just finished confirming today for gardening photography. She did one before. Nan, I don't remember if you went to that one. Joanna Pearson, she did, she had beautiful, beautiful photography. She uses a special software and everything of gardens, you know, around New England. So, she's been doing them on Zoom, and I thought, okay, yeah, inspires people. It's a nice time of year to look at, you know, some really beautiful gardens. And then she'll do a second one called Fragrance in the Garden, so she's gonna give tips and show a lot of pictures about, you know, what kinds of things you can plant in your garden that really maybe attract hummingbirds or they have a lot of fragrance to them. So, I think it'll be, it'll be nice. Again, it's a virtual program, but, you know, you can sit at 10 o'clock on a Saturday morning and have your coffee and, and, you know, watch the show. So, hopefully, we'll get a good turnout. So, and I guess the bill schedule, if anybody's got any questions, it's pretty generic bill schedule, but if you wanted any questions, happy to answer them. No questions?
Looks like we have no questions.
Okay, then, that's, that's-
Thank you, Jean. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
The next thing I have on the agenda, trustee questions, new business, old business. The first item is updating the BOT information on the APL site, former new staff corrections. Nan, did you want to talk about that? You're on mute. I've been having a hard time unmuting and muting.
Sorry. I'm hoping that the board will be able to continue with this kind of update on our paragraph on the library and town website as well, if, if that's the way it's gonna go. Certainly, my name will come off, but I understand new staff and updating should go on as well. We had talked at various times during our meetings of including a, a board description of how long our terms are and what we're trying to accomplish with our, with our meetings. Certainly continuing on announcing that our meetings are open to the public, available on go-to-meeting, needs to be publicized there. I'm not sure if people would go to the guide or any other source to access our meetings. And finally, the minutes could be included in this area. That would be a direct link to our, our board. So, I'm, I'm hoping that we can either make a motion at some later time when all this information is, is complete and get it on, on the line.
That's a good point. After you sent me the email, Nan, I did look at the town site, and the minutes that are on there are from 2020 and some of them from earlier than that. So, very good point.
Good.
Good point. Does anybody have any commentary?
I would say I think it's great to have it updated with the, the current staff and maybe the tenure timeframe as well as a description, and I just caught myself. I mean, for a member that's not staff for the BOT section, apologies for that, but I, I would say anything related to like minutes or about our meetings should really just be linking to the town's webpage. If we've got a bigger question of enhancing that for usability, but that's not our purview or role, so I would just say we would redirect them to, you know, the section of meeting stuff or the section for minutes, which they have if you dig in a little bit, so that that's not something that Jean or her staff has to worry about updating after a regular meeting. It's all reflected on what's being updated on the town and where everything we submit is through the town. That would be my only difference in, in Nan's commentary, that it just links back to appropriate pages on the webpage, so there's no additional burden on the BOT. So there's no additional burden on the B O, the APL staff, and that it's referred to where all things should be for the town on the town site.
Well said. Yeah, I agree. Anybody else?
I, I, I agree with Nan and her suggestions, and I think they're important.
I agree. I agree. The next item on the agenda, Nan, you wanted to talk about the charter change process?
Well, that may be part of future work or not, but I thought it was interesting that there are few libraries in Massachusetts without some of the responsibilities that are allowed to us with mass general laws. And I thought it would be helpful just to realize that Arlington, Concord, and Belrika have very strong town managers. So that their board is concentrating on policies and budget advocacy. So that, that maybe is just something to keep in mind if you ever felt like networking or just crying on somebody else's shoulder.
You said Arlington, Belrika, and what else?
Concord.
Mary, oh, I'm sorry, do you have any, were you going to say something else, Nan?
No, I just wanted to put those towns out there so that they might, in the future, give you some advice.
Mary, I thought Julie, or the town manager, was going to be at this meeting to talk about that change process. I think we asked her.
You know, I know. We did, I, I didn't follow up and invite her again, we did ask her at the last meeting, which was in March.
Yeah, I think.
You know what I'll do, Matt? I will, I'll invite her to our, our next meeting, which is June 2nd, to address that.
Is it possible that she could send us material about that?
Yes.
I mean, that must be available somewhere within that town manager's system.
Matt, are you meaning to send material in place of coming to the meeting or as a sort of a?
No, Paula, what I thought is if we had some.
Introduction to the meeting in June.
If we had it before the meeting, we'd be able to have a conversation.
Yeah. Okay, I'm confident that we can make that happen. And I, and I just, I really appreciate being able to review things before meetings, and thank you, Jean, that you've had the director's report, you know, a few days in advance, it's just very helpful. I know the last time we did ask Julie to come, she did present us with all the materials first, so I will reach out to her about coming to the next meeting and the, and the request of the board that we get the charter change material or any information she has related to that prior to our meeting for review.
I'll try to dig up some of that information as well. I, I, I thought that maybe it'd be much easier for her to do that, but I know there's a process for that, and we, we've done it on, on a couple of locations. It does, mostly goes through town meeting, but I, I don't know all the steps for that.
I was at March, so I'm just going to recap what I think I'm hearing right here. So there was a conversation about charter change at the March meeting. We want to have a conversation with Julie to request at some point potentially in the future, some form of that to adjust, if that's the right word, roles and responsibilities. Is that correct?
Yes. I mean, that's my, I don't know anybody else.
I can add, I can add a bit from the MBLC. I had written Mary Rose Quinn about our situation with being responsible for certain policy and advocacy. And she has sent me a number of resources or references, so I'll be happy to send that along as a private citizen and will not be putting people in jeopardy.
Nice going, Nan, thank you.
I appreciate it. That's excellent. Any other comments on the charter change? And thank you, Jennifer, for just clarifying that, I wrote that out, and I'll follow right up with Julie regarding our next meeting, but also getting us as much information as we can so that we can wrap our heads around, you know, moving forward as a board and what we need to advocate for. Anybody else on that? Again, sorry about my fresh dog, whenever I talk to anyone, she competes from the other room, and I can't stop her. The next item we had on the agenda was any updates regarding the Friends 501(c)(3).
Well, I'd like to tell you that there's a lot to say, but there isn't. In talking to Phil, he said, it's only been three months since he submitted it. And with the IRS, the way things are going now, you're lucky if you get a response in six months.
Right.
So, you know, in a way, this will work out pretty nicely, because about the same time that we can start having in-person meetings, we might have all of this established so that the Friends group can become active. So it's just a question of waiting, and he said, rest assured, as soon as I hear anything, you guys will know.
Very good. The next item on the agenda was actually me, I, I wanted to just talk about the youth survey revision. I know we brushed upon it last time, I told the board that Dr. Handfield did get back to me, and he said that he would absolutely support any sort of survey that we wanted to give the youth. And the, the, what I, the only two questions that I could see that would be helpful, and they're, they're directly from the, you know, the youth survey that we did last year, you know, 2019, 2020. Question 15 read, please share any additional feedbacks and suggestions that you have for the Auburn Public Library and how we can improve our teen offerings, collections, programs, services over the next five years. And some of the comments that the kids had made, I just wanted to reiterate. They talked about having more books that teens like to read regarding collections, they talked about video games, new books and movies, services. One, one student commented that it'd be great if libraries, library cards could be issued on at the school, if that could be made possible. And in terms, in terms of facility, they just talked about needing a quiet place to work and a place where teens can hang out. So that was question 15. And question 16 was just basically the question about, it is, I'll just quote it. "To learn how we can improve our youth collections, programs, and services, the Auburn Public Library is considering conducting a focus group at the library. Participants would be eligible for community service." So those were the only two questions that if we send a survey that, that really need to be updated. So I wanted to share that with the board, but also apologize that I had intended to have it as a document before this meeting so that we could vote on it. But I, I sort of wanted to reach out to the board and find out if, if I could just draft up those two questions, if you think that for the next meeting that we could vote on it and approve it, and then we could get some information from the teens in June just before school gets out, or if you think that that's not a good use of our time. Go ahead, Matt.
You're on mute.
You're on, okay. Mute is a little sticky tonight, I don't know why. Are you still on mute, Matt? So while you're on muting, I just, to clarify, I guess this is my newness as a chairperson. I guess I, what I, what I want, to be more direct, I want to know if the board would be okay with those two questions, and I can make a survey and send it to Dr. Handfield, or if you would like to, for me to be able to draft it and share it before the next meeting so we can vote on it. Go ahead, Matt.
Make a motion that would allow you to be able to do that, but you're only talking about those same two questions.
Right, that's it.
I think, I think we could make a motion for you to be able to do that and to, and work with the superintendent.
So I have a couple of questions before we move forward in the major action. One, what are you clarifying on the first question? And I'm unsure about what you're trying to change on the, what feedback would you like for us to have better collections over the next five years?
Yeah, I think that, that's the question, Jennifer. It was just, the original question was feel free to share any additional feedback that you have for the Auburn Public Library, how we can improve our offerings, and then we had in parentheses, collections, programs, services over the next five years. And I just took out a few words and, and just wanted an update information from the students if they had any feedback for us.
So then question two is, wasn't our youth survey meant to be with Sage Consulting? And shouldn't our consultant be the one evaluating and doing this? And then three, I don't think we should make that decision today if one or two are plausible. And if we don't make a decision today, June is not an appropriate time. They're not going to be paying attention to it, they're going to be out, I mean, like, the last, what, 18 months is just a farce for most people, I think mentally. It's not going to be appropriate to really ask students as they're leaving the end of a year, they're, we're just not going to get the same thing, and we're going to get a tainted perspective because they haven't been to the library in the way they may have been if we were in a pandemic. So I, I wouldn't rush this process.
Thank you, Jen. If I could just make, oh, sorry, Matt, go ahead. But Matt, and then Jean, go ahead, Matt.
I would agree with Jen that probably if we can't get it done before June, that they're not going to be invested in doing much of anything. Really, we know that they're not using the library very much, and what we're trying to do, I think, is to find out why. And I think waiting on this might be a good idea, and I don't know whether we can do any work with Sage Consulting, I don't know what they would charge for that. I don't know, that would have to be worked on as well, but I agree that maybe this timing is kind of tough.
Okay. Is it okay with the board if I just, if we reach out and ask, just for future reference, if I ask Barbara what that would cost for just a follow-up survey, brief survey?
But I think we already had that quote, probably discussed this when we were doing it. Don't quote me on this number, but I believe it was like $500, but I could be wrong, don't, don't hold me to it. But Jean, you wanted to say something, and I don't want to.
Go ahead, Jean.
No, I just want to say, I, I appreciated your comments, Jen, I, I completely agree with you. And I also want to add that, first of all, I, I think the director should be, it should show collaboration with the library director if you're doing a survey. But also, we already have actually, as part of the match, you know, the massive weeding project, we have also targeted the YA collection. And so we have actually, you know, started that, there, it's, the YA collection, you really have to update much more frequently than had been. It doesn't need to be as big, it just is more relevant, and we have actually added quite a lot of YA materials. Whether they come in the library, at, you know, at a certain point, it's really, you know, it's kind of our year control. They have jobs, or they need cars, or they have sports and whatever. It doesn't mean we don't try to meet their needs, but in fact, we have been doing that. And we're looking at how if we change the, you know, expand the internal children's room that will take, that will go into some of the YA area, which frankly, I have always been really unhappy with, I kind of inherited that. It's, it's secretive over there on the corner, and there's all kinds of things that kind of need to change. And we only have so much space, we're going to get the sunroom, but we still have, you know, just only so much space. So I agree with you, no one's coming in, how can you evaluate, you know, the library? I would also add that we have in fact done many instruction sessions at the middle school. We weren't able to do it, then they got a new principal and kind of, you know, but we would definitely want to be doing that again. We definitely believe in the, in the outreach, we visited the schools, we brought their cards, we showed them how to use it, and they did. The problem, it's not a problem, it's just the population you reach one year, in the next year or two years, they're in a whole different phase of their life. And so, you know, you, you certainly reach out to what you can, but knowing somebody who writes a comment this year, and if they haven't seen the library or anything, and then they go on to other things, high school, whatever, you need, just going to get that whole different focus from them as well. So I agree that, and I, and I did also, was also under the impression that the consultant was going to, you know, manage the focus group or whatever it is that you decide to do. And, and I did also say that, you know, letting me know ahead of time, you know, I can free up some state aid money if you wanted to do, you know, incentives for the focus group or whatever. But I, I agree, June is not a good time, and maybe not even, it's hard to say when. So I'm open to it certainly, but some considerations that were important.
I wonder if we would hold off, if we reach out to Barbara, or if we do, just reach out and saying we're, we're tabling this? Because I wonder with the passing of the town meeting vote for the jury square beautification project, it wouldn't be the who of us to ask the youth at that stage, when then they may be more actively engaged in that new beautified area as it's being developed, and we can start having different things and know what's going on, and that might be more timely for them and allow the pandemic to move past us, so that those who do use the library can actually provide context to the experience in person. But we want it to be what they're seeing, because it's been, it's been tough this year. Surveying anyone is just going to be mean, because you're not going to have a whole lot of positive things to say.
Fair enough, fair enough. Just a follow-up about the teens, Jean, do we have any sort of social media presence with the teens? For instance, Instagram or Facebook related to the library?
No, that's, that's under town policy, we don't, we don't do that. Any kind of social media, Facebook is through the town, and Julie oversees that, so we don't have that, there's no, there are no plans to do that.
Okay.
Sometimes you open up a lot of can of worms, and it's, so that would not part of our plan moving forward.
Thank you for sharing, but I do want to say that I'm on Instagram. Yeah, and you know, Lester Public Library does lots of really innovative things using Instagram, which is why I brought it up. That I, I tune into them a lot, the storytelling, there's all the kinds of things that are, that I think would appeal to our, our teens and our early teens. We call them tweens, the middle school and the high school. That's just my comment, any, anybody else?
Good, but I think to Jean's point, she just said there's something about town policy for social media. I think this is a bigger question for like Julie, town meeting, like help us understand what the strategy for the town is, because aside from library posts, which I do see, I don't know if there's a good, like, we post five times a day, or we only post these things. I tend to see more like, I'm missing an animal, or there's a fun project at the library than I see, you know, news and facts and figures, and that could just be the strategy that they've employed that we may not be aware of. But it might be good to get that out to the public in general. I don't know the policies behind all that.
I know as, as a member of the Culture Committee, we have a Facebook page. It's not necessarily, it's, we don't necessarily update it, but we often use it when we're, to let the public know that grants are available and things like that, and any kind of updates. We have a Facebook page, but, but Instagram is really popular with the teens, which is why I brought that up. Any other comments about that? And I, and I, I heard what everyone said, we can table the survey questions, and I can reach out to Barbara and just find out for future reference what that might look like. Okay, the last question, last item on the agenda.
I just had a question for.
Go ahead. Was that Paula?
Oh, I just wanted to ask, yeah, sorry, Mary, I just had a question for Jean about what the libraries are like at the high school and the middle school. Are they venues which the kids would go to to access YA books?
As far as I know.
Would not see.
Um, I, I'm not real sure about the high school. I know that when I was in the middle school, they had a beautiful library, but as far as I know, they really don't focus on books, it's more the media center. So, I, I mean, they were focusing on books, because then we, they did the, you know, the summer reading, and they actually, you know, the principal actually brought some books over to the library, we put them in our, in our system, and, you know, did all that. The high school hasn't even had a summer reading list for a couple of years. So I, I know there's, I, I know there's a very good librarian at the high school, I guess I could reach out to her to see, but I, I have a feeling it's more maybe supportive to coursework, but I'm not sure, more like along the lines of an academic library. And, you know, a lot of times, and, you know, they all have iPads, so I think there's more focus on the technology, and I don't think. So I think there's more focus on the technology. And I don't think they call it a library. I think it's media center or something like that. I'm not really sure. I know that they're supportive of the library. They've actually had some outreach from, and I try to stay connected with people in the various schools. And, and I've definitely had some outreach and there's interest in collaborating with the library. And, and we have that as well. It's a matter, not only just for us, but it's a matter of time and staffing and actually finding time to get initiatives going. The last time, I think it was the schools that would just think of things that were too crazy for them. And it's hard to, it's hard to get those going. Not that we're not going to, but I don't think it's the same, the libraries not run the same way. And that doesn't mean it's better or worse. It's just, I think it's different. So I'm not sure that is the question, but I don't, I don't think I know enough about.
Matt?
That answer your question, Paula? Not sure.
We know that we tried to do a summary in the minutes, but could the statements about Nan please be in their total in the minutes for tonight's reading?
Absolutely. I can send, I can send that to you.
Need yours, Mary.
Yep, I'll just send it to you right on. Yeah, just another comment, though, that I knew from having elementary school kids in my house. I know in Auburn, they don't have librarians for the elementary schools. And what they do is they have a volunteer rotation of parents that come in and do the readings. But I'm not familiar with the middle or the high school. I think, I, I would agree with Jean. I think it's more of a media center kind of a, you know, model. Did anybody have, I wasn't sure, Paula, if you were adjusting your screen or if you had your hand up? Paula, did you have a question?
You there, Paula?
Paula, can you hear me? I don't think she can hear me. I, I just saw her hand up. I know that I, I have a Chromebook, so I have to touch the screen to, to maneuver it. Anybody have anything else about that library information? Questions? So we'll move on. The last question, Matt brought it up related to the strategic plan goals. He, he had talked about having some sort of a survey. And I was really, I'm bringing it back up because I'm very interested in getting surveys. Just have we, I know we, we talked about it in March, Jean, but have we given any more thought to some sort of simple survey that people could fill out to talk about their experience with the program so that we could get some real, some, some feedback?
Well, at this point, that would be a discussion Julie and I would have. And we have had preliminary discussions that fall into the area of goals for the director. So that would be a conversation that I would have with Julie. At this point, I, I sort of refer to kind of what Jen said. I mean, people, they don't really want to spend time on surveys. But I will say, it doesn't mean we're not listening to our, our patrons. We talk to a lot of patrons every single day, on the phone, out at curbside, and now in the library. You know, they're happy to come in. They don't really want to stop and take a survey. I think that there will be room for that once we start expanding the children's room, and then probably have, you know, some opportunities there. And again, that would be something that I would discuss with Julie because that would be a directive or, you know, a conversation between her and myself about, about the director goals.
All right. But you know, I have different, I have different perspectives on that, Jean, but I appreciate your point. I think when it comes to, like, I'm a big user of Yelp and Google, Google ratings on places. I think, I think when we're talking about getting feedback from teenagers who are burnt out from being on screen all the time versus consumers like myself, I fill out, I fill out surveys for everything, McDonald's, any place that I go that gives good, good customer service. Very rarely do I give a negative one. But I would disagree. I think that there's a lot of rope to get feedback from the community. And I do, you know, I do defer to you in your conversations with Julie. But from a chairperson point of view and a co-chair of the Culture Committee, I want to hear, I want to hear people's experiences and whether they, you know, whether they can give us helpful feedback to improve or to discontinue things if we don't think that that's, you know, not a very popular program. And I know that when we, when we did our gathering for the grant recipients, we did ask everyone that we granted money to, to get some sort of feedback from the community to, to kind of give us some hard data moving forward and planning as a cultural committee. That's my last point. Can, I think Jen and then Matt?
Jen, go ahead first.
You know, I, I agree with you, Mary. And this is a point that I, I think anecdotal information is interesting, but it's not the same as filling out a short survey. When
I agree.
The, the strategic plan, library after library after library had information. They had short surveys about their programs and their services. And they were done anonymously, or they were done using the, the iPhone or one of those kinds of phones. The, you know, when people talk, they're not going to be, they're not, they're not going to generally be negative. And they're not going to be, they don't give you real hard information. You can ask five questions. You don't have to ask 50. And you can do something with the, with the iPhone where people can just answer on them. You can't even have a doctor's appointment today often without answering a bunch of questions. So I don't think it's too much to ask to do that. But I understand that we have, we had it in the strategic plan, but we have no authority to request it. I guess write Julie and ask that that be part of the goal. And I mean, that's the only vehicle that we have.
So I'm, we'll clarify on it. I think asking the teens to like talk about how the library has been beneficial for them while in a pandemic would be a negative survey response.
Right.
I would say I understand concerns about that because there are a lot of programs that you're running, Jean. So it can seem like we're, we're trying to ask for like 100 different surveys, which can be very difficult to manage and track and really have good analytics behind. But one thing that I think has come well out of this pandemic that would be beneficial and could be an easy way to do this and would also hit younger generations are the QR codes.
A what?
QR codes. They're usually are the menus at a restaurant. They did not fly when they came out in the early, you know, 2010s. But they have really picked up traction in the past. And I think they're going to stick around much more than they did the last time. But you can have a few of those throughout the library, asking basically, you know, did you attend a program? Yes. Tell us what it is and auto text it in there. And then it could be just, how do you feel about the library today? Did you have positive service? Or as Matt just said, the doctor's office, I visualize the scale of one to 10 smiley faces of how much pain you're in. Like, it could even be that simplistic of, how was the experience today? And people would have the option to choose to do it, but at least it's readily available. And it's not something that you're necessarily sending to everyone after an event. But you have a few little tech cards on a table or on the RCP page or whatever, or just have this one QR code and it could help populate that and streamline the process. That wouldn't be overwhelming to do it, but would allow for more structured feedback to come through. So just a thought, again, and Matt, Mary, and Jean, you all mentioned, it's not something that we can force or hey, let's put this up here ourselves. But it would be worth sharing that and looking at what are ways that we can do to get some more structured feedback so that we can all continue to grow and learn from our users and our counterparts and personally.
I think it's, it's considered best practices now with all of the, every time I go to a doctor's appointment, I get a survey. And I have to say, just because unfortunately, we've had some family issues where we spent a lot of time at Leahy for over a five-year period, and then Newton Wellesley Hospital. And the professionalism and the expertise was amazing. And I asked over and over again, how, how do you get it to this point? Me coming from public education where things are a little bit more relaxed. And they said, we survey, the staff said, we get surveyed on our, on our experiences, staff members, patients get surveyed, people in the, you know, people in custodial services, everybody surveyed. And there's just a constant, a constant effort for quality control, really. So, so I, I'm a huge fan of getting feedback on a regular basis about how we're doing.
Almost in anything that we do, I, I would guess at the library, if there's a program, there have to be two or three goals for that program.
Right, right.
Success to, to, to people achieve the goals that were expected as outcomes. That's, it's not, it's not out of hard work. And I, your thing, it's really simple. That, you just, look what you could do in restaurants now with.
Right. Exactly. I think it's brilliant as well. Anyway, any other comments about those items? And thank you, thank you, everybody for sharing so generously. I, I just love the idea of the QR codes. But again, I reiterate, I heard your point, Jean, that that's a conversation you need to have with the town manager. If there are not any other agenda items, I'd like to just remind everyone, our next meeting is Wednesday, June 2nd, 2021 at 6:30 virtually. And I want to just congratulate Nan again on your, you're a role model. You're just somebody I look up to very much, and you've been so good to me. So I just want to thank you and let you know we'll miss you. And if there's not anything else, we can adjourn. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
That was.
Okay. And I have a second. So a motion from Matt, second, but from Nan at 7:39. Thank you, everyone.
Evening.
Thank you. Good night.